What are Public Works and Engineering Services Committee meeting for March 28th? Already had a pledge, three members present this morning. Previous meeting.
Second.
Mr. Johnson, are we good with the?
I believe it's ready for your approval, Ms. Chairman.
Items, we'll go right into the debate.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
First item we have is an agreement with Southern Asphalt for Water Utility Campus Paving. This is an item that we bid once and received no bidders, and we worked procurement to open sale quotes again, and we had one quote on this item for a cost of $708,172.38, and our budget was $850,000, and staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Compared to the other, when we bid before, you said we bid it before, then we shut it down, is this more expensive than those bids?
No, sir. We bid it before, but we received no bids.
No bids, excuse me?
Yeah.
How much did you say on the budget?
It's almost $150,000 under budget.
Move to consent.
Second.
No move.
The second item I have is the purchase of a Ram 3500 cabin chassis from Thompson Motor. This is to replace a 2008 vehicle with approximately 170,000 miles. The vehicle we're replacing, we're having lots of mechanical and electrical issues with it. We've replaced the engine once, still having some issues. Fleet has recommended replacing this vehicle. We budgeted $70,000, and the quote is for $61,973. And our equipment for this vehicle is still in good shape, so we're going to move the jetting equipment and remount it on this vehicle. And staff recommends approval of this purchase.
Move to consent.
Second.
Move. Good job bringing us in on budget.
Yes, sir.
Also, lots of good details. Thank you.
Next.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
The first item we have is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of streetlight districts for Four Oaks, Phase 2C, Greenpoint, Phase 1B, Highland Lakes, Section 3. Staff received petition from the developer and all residents from these neighborhoods. Staff reached out to the respective power provider and requested upfront cost for installation and also annual cost. Public hearing notifications were mailed out and advertised in the Augusta Chronicle. We'd like to open the public hearing, and staff will document any comment.
Public hearing for the streetlight district is now open. Favor or oppose? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on the streetlight district.
The next item is a resolution for the same, Resolution 23-09, 23-11, and 23-13, to establish streetlight districts in Four Oaks, Phase 2C, Greenpoint, Phase 1B, and Highland Lakes, Section 3. Had the public hearing, staff recommends approval with the first of two readings going before the board.
Move to debate.
Second.
Utility costs is more. Front pole cost is fine. Bring that up.
The next item we have is a proposal from Georgia Power to provide a safety lighting at the intersection of Evans-Talox Road and Jennings Road. Traffic engineering received a request to evaluate the need for a safety light at this intersection. It did meet three of the six criteria required for safety lighting. We reached out to Georgia Power, they provided a cost to install and annual utility cost. We funded IPTF, the annual utility cost is $621.36 for two lights. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
No move?
The next item is Resolution 23-15 for the creation of a no parking zone on Bellwood Drive. Staff received a petition from the residents along Bellwood Drive requesting a no parking zone from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Apparently, vehicles from Augusta Cheer Academy are parking in driveways and on properties while their children attend the Cheer Academy. Staff reviewed and prepared the resolution. Staff recommends approval.
Are there enough parking spaces? Cheer Academy, why would they be parking in the street?
We believe it's because the Cheer Academy's parking is not sufficient.
We not have approved that? Is there a certain?
Our code does have required spaces, but that doesn't guarantee that everybody gets any space.
Business is good, is what you're saying?
I think that is it. I think the business is.
Next.
Second.
Body that would like to speak on this issue. Heatherly Philgrove, would you come forward, please? State your name, if I can please.
My name is Heatherly Philgrove. I'm at 111 Bellwood Drive. I have purchased the property three months ago. And my first encounter at all back there is the parking. They have 49 parking spots on their site plan. There's nine residential properties back there. And when you get out, it's, you know, for a female or anybody, ask them to move so you can get to your property, you know, just enter the property, and even, they're so territorial, they want you to go through their loop. I'm not dropping off and picking up kids. I passed that stage in my life. And, you know, and tried to be respectful when we played soccer at different venues. Business may be good, you know, for them now, but it's not good for us, the residents. And I don't even live there yet. I'm preparing a home for my son that, you know, cognitively, you know, can live on his own. But people don't understand mental illness, so they may take it the wrong way of being laughed at when he gets nervous. And so I don't want him to have to come in confrontation, you know, because this is a very small road. And not, you cannot double park this road. Not even a single car park it. And there, I did an account for cars coming out of the neighborhood, or out of the Augusta Academy Cheer Club, and it was over 200 and something vehicles that circled through. I mean, it was, and they block the whole, you know, when they do their circle, you cannot get to the bottom. You know, to her driveway, my driveway, people turn around in the driveways, headlights. We're not even talking about the music, the sound. Or it's Bob, he's 86 years old, and he's right in front of it. And he went out and wrote on their car window with a bar of soap, "No parking." And I'm like, "Bob, you can't do that," you know? And he's probably all of five foot, and, you know, he was very sick in January and required ambulatory service. And so that's another one of our concerns, is having, you know, ambulatory service, fire service, you know? And I have personally called Augusta Cheer Academy, and I believe spoke with the representative, the answer's a phone, Katie maybe, might be her name, to try to resolve it, you know, on our own to discuss, hey, get through here, hire, you know, private deputy to direct traffic. And they said, "Well, all you can do is call the police." And we've done that, and we've been told there is not anything else that we can do. And I realize this is moving forward, but I just want to make sure that we seal it, we put it to bed, that we don't have to come back and do this again, and know how important it is. Because they can't park down my driveway, so that's another reason, you know, with the no parking of street. People would have to see, you know, the properties and the driveways, or they're very small. So sometimes it requires for residents to park on the street. And so I don't want to limit myself, you know, to not parking on the street, but I don't want to open Pandora's box either.
Think five to 10. I may be wrong, but you wouldn't park as a resident in front of your house? Cutting out parking.
Right, that's why I'm also asking, so maybe it should be resident-only parking, you know, the people that actually, you know?
I think probably the best way to handle it is saying five to 10, and then when the deputy comes through, it's no question.
But I don't want to have to.
If the pickle is there, they address it, and if not, then they're going to have to know whether somebody's visiting you or your son, and that would just be, I think, forms that would probably make them less likely to want to come by and check and enforce it.
Well, the street's only, it's a dead-end street, and it's very small, so we all know who lives there.
But the deputy.
Deputy.
Right, I completely understand. I mean, we can, you know, I just want to make sure that even if it's resident-only, I think that way they know that it's resident-only, you know, for parking, because if it's not, one of us, it's no problem for us to call a deputy to enforce that.
Motion was from five to 10, and that's.
Right, that's what I had asked.
Okay.
Right, that's what I had asked for, so when.
Thank you.
But if they have overnight, you know, for parking, I want to make sure that we include the, you know, to resolve that. If they have like a spend the night over, I don't, you know, it's just, it's very difficult. So I want to make sure we don't have to, you know, do it again, because it's, like I said, very hard for me to get out of the car and go ask somebody that's very, you know, rude, and they think, you know, it's their street. But Linda would also like to speak as well.
I'll give her a couple of minutes. Thank you for coming in. Would you state your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry. Linda Tucker.
Yes, ma'am.
And I actually, that's my brother that lives down on the street at 115 Bellwood Drive. Lived there since 60s, where he was born, he was actually born there. I'm just going to read this off real quick. I know you guys are busy. Okay, so there's cars parked on both sides, both shoulders of Bellwood Drive, often with headlights on. Even as I dim my lights descending Bellwood at night, these folks continue to keep lights on at full beam. Cars coming out of Cheer Academy, very seldom, very seldom, look to see if there is a car descending Bellwood. It ends up being a standoff. Cars ascending Bellwood, meaning people that live down there, have cars parked at shoulders suddenly veer off in front of ascending cars. They do not look to see if cars are ascending. Should anyone attempt to walk down Bellwood, which my brother does, he does not drive, doesn't have a license, and her brother will be the same boat. They suddenly veer off, and it becomes very, very dangerous. Cars are charging up. So it's just a dangerous situation. I'm surprised there haven't been any accidents up there. Anyway, I hope this helps.
Coming in, and hopefully this five to 10. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Item?
Yes, the next item is a contract with Rhythm for N-Cent coverage, plan, and warranty. This is an annual contract that we execute with Rhythm for our traffic engineering department. This contract will be funded at IPTF. It is in the amount of $36,581.11. The contract period is from November 1st of 2022 to October 31st, 2023. The reason that this is backdated, so to speak, is because typically, prior to this being brought to the board, the contract was executed because it was approved through the budget process. This was a mistake on my part, so we have asked for our contract to be prepared with Rhythm. That's been done, it's been vetted by procurement, and now we are bringing it before the board for approval.
You work to on the cycle, the budget year cycle?
Sure. Sure.
As traffic increases, will we be adding more intersections?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Each of our signaled intersections have the rhythm.
Move to consent.
Second.
This next item is a construction contract with Reeves Construction for intersection improvements at South Old Bel Air Lane, excuse me, for South Old Bel Air Road and Old Bel Air Lane. This is a rebid of the project. The low bidder came in at $717,887. The Jackson Heights subdivision is a couple tenths of a mile beyond this intersection. However, staff realized when we were working with the developer in the planning review process that this intersection would be insufficient for the new amount of traffic that's coming through it. So staff worked with the developer, and the developer made a $250,000 contribution to the improvements of this intersection. We've already received that check. Again, the total amount is $717,887, $250,000, which will be paid out of that developer contribution. Staff recommends approval.
Add on this and go with one and not the other?
Yes, sir. So basically, the base bid was for the widening and intersection improvements. The add alternate one was for the overlay of the whole intersection. And then add alternate two was for relocating a water line out from under what would be a right-turn D cell lane. We worked with Water Utility, and Water Utility concurred that we did not need to relocate that water line. It was okay where it was, though we are not asking for the water line to be relocated with this contract, only do widening and resurfacing.
Move to consent.
Second.
I think we've got a couple of people that come forward.
I think you know me well. Bob Willis, I'm at 731 Royal Springs Lane. Thanks to Dale who just built me a home, I've moved from 741 to 731. So I just want to, I guess we want to speak to the scope. We want to understand a little bit more about the scope of what's been approved, and I can work with engineering further understand that, but you know that there's a semicircle kind of lane. It makes two intersections there on South Bel Air Road, and the concern seems to be coming from the Brookwood Elementary side, that we have a left-hand turn that will go into Birchfield, which is absolutely appropriate and necessary. There's another dangerous end to that loop, however, that we would like to have addressed. Maybe another scope of work, because I know that this one's locked down. And then, of course, I've risen for a couple of times to talk about Old Bel Air Lane itself being so narrow and so on. So there's some talk of either severing that road, so it's a dead end at one end of the other, or widening it for further traffic, because we've got Birchfield, you know, coming out there and so forth and so on. We do have an OB-GYN doctor who lives on our Royal Springs Lane, who's required to be at doctor's hospital within 15 minutes of notification to deliver. He comes down our private road, and then he has 160 homes from Birchfield competing with him to get to this problem intersection. So either we block that, and we can go the other way, and Birchfield doesn't dump onto that road, or we're going to have to address the widening of that in some fashion. Phase one is almost complete of Jackson Heights. Phase two has not yet begun. We're already experiencing high traffic volume in there. And when we have, most households these days have about two cars per house. So you're going to have 160 times two flooding out to this small intersection. So I just would recommend that we further study that traffic pattern a little bit to see what else might be necessary to accommodate the residents in that area. And so I would just like to work with engineering to understand the full scope of the bid of this one and where we might go in the future to alleviate other concerns, especially as Phase two comes on line of Jackson Heights. Thank you very much.
Come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Dale Seckles, 4870 Old Bel Air Lane. I live just up the road from where this intersection is, obviously off of Old Bel Air Lane. First of all, I'm really glad to see this project come to fruition. It's been a couple of years waiting. As a consequence, a lot of traffic has come onto Old Bel Air Lane with two outcomes. One is totally destroyed that road. It is a minor construction road. It's not a heavy subbase or anything. Designed to go to the water tower at the end of the road. All of the heavy construction, I mean, you can imagine concrete truck after concrete truck, all the delivery trucks and everything on a substandard road is literally falling apart. The edges are falling out. It's flooded constantly. In fact, I have some pictures from Saturday, if you'd like to see them. That's one thing. It needs to be addressed. It's my understanding that there's money for paving South Old Bel Air Road. That road is a thousand times better than Old Bel Air Lane. So however you can manage to get that, please plant the seed on getting that road repaved. The other thing is, it's created a lot of safety issues. That road was also a problem identified by the county three decades ago. We've had two people killed on the intersection at the north end of that intersection. One of them clearly due to the configuration of the road, the other one a combination of a medical issue. I live right on the outside bend, and I have to mow my grass there. I've literally jumped out of the way, I don't know how many times, to avoid from getting hit by cars coming through there very quickly. I've had them land in my ditch, they've taken out my mailbox, they've taken out my magnolia tree. So it's not a safe condition. So that, as Mr. Willis indicated, we have to cut that road off somewhere so that we can minimize that traffic flow. And fortunately, with this improvement of that intersection on the south end, that will allow great traffic flow for the two large subdivisions that are on that lane. One, thank you for considering this. I hope you vote positive for it. Second of all, just please look out for the future for this. Old Bel Air Lane needs to be improved. Thank you for your time.
I don't think I moved it. Was a question of South Bel Air, oh, South Bel Air Road approval for repaving on this meeting today?
Yes, sir.
That does not include talking about it.
Old Bel Air Lane is scheduled, I believe, to be resurfaced with L-MIG 2023, which is the next item.
Oh, it is. That should address the concerns that he's talking about.
Several.
Some of it, and what, so for clarity in my mind, I think what I'm hearing is they'd like to block off. What I'm thinking is, are you coming down Bel Air Road or closing it on the Jackson Heights, or closing it on the end, or you go straight off of Old Bel Air Road?
Yes, sir. So we're looking at several different options and sequence. The first, the critical path, is this intersection, because when we improve this intersection, it's an equated intersection. The vertical and horizontal side distance are not great, so we're looking to address that. When we improve that, it will change traffic patterns. So before we get the, put the cart in front of the horse, we want to see how this operates and then do the traffic study. At that point, we will look at, one, Old Bel Air Lane should be resurfaced by that time. But two is where we want to disconnect Old Bel Air Lane, if that's what we want to do. Of course, we will meet with, we will have public meetings with property owners and advertise that appropriately. But we will look at where and how to disconnect that and what makes the most sense.
Conversation. Thank you. Item?
The next item is a construction contract with Gary Civil Works for 2023 L-MIG. This is our annual local maintenance improvement grant through GDOT. On December 20th of last year, the board approved the proposed road list with a total project commitment of 5.65 million. The project was advertised, and the low bidder came in at about 8.2 million. So we're a little off of budget. Staff is currently negotiating with the contractor, trying to get that back in the budget. So until we're able to finalize that negotiation, we'd like to recommend this item be moved to the full board's debate agenda on April 18th to allow us to finish the negotiation process.
Move to debate.
Second.
No move? What can do there? Item?
This next item is a construction contract with J. Long Construction for Patriots Park Turn Lanes. If you recall, we just finished the resurfacing of William View Parkway from Lewiston to Washington Road. We left out one gap, and that was from Columbia Road to Patriots Park's main entrance on William View Parkway. This was because the intersection, there were some utilities, some storm drainage. It was more complicated than we were able to meet without hiring a consultant. So staff hired a consultant, had the intersection surveyed and designed. We're ready now to go to construction. We advertised the project for bid with the low bidder being J. Long Construction in the amount of $545,934.66. So basically, when they install these turn lanes, they will finish the resurfacing from where we stopped on William View, all the way to Columbia Road as well. So that'll button up that project, so to speak. They will have 115 days from the notice to proceed. This is funded at Tia discretionary. Staff recommends approval.
This will be after our peak at baseball and softball and we're going right. Project cranks up, hopefully we'll have a time to get a ball season.
Sure, we will work with community services on issuing the notice of proceeding in conjunction with his schedule. Now that said, we're limited on how far we can push it out as well and hold these prices.
Unfortunately, Ms. Chairman, there's not a good time.
I was about to say.
We are trying to balance that. We're looking at other projects at Patriots Park. With the amount of participation we have in our youth sports now and the things that are going on in the county, we're just going to have to work around it.
To consent.
Second.
After ball season.
Yes, sir.
Here, John, to pieces.
Yes, sir.
This next item is a construction contract with Southern Asphalt for resurfacing of White Oak Road, County Line Road, and Sawdust Road. This is the first grouping of resurfacings for TIA-2. Staff issued this for bid with a TIA budget of approximately $4.43 million. The project was advertised, and the low bidder was Southern Asphalt in the amount of $5.48 million. Similarly, we would recommend moving this to the board while staff negotiates with the contractor, try to bring it back within budget. We recommend this to the board's April 18th debate agenda.
Move to debate.
Second.
Item, sir?
This next item is a supplemental agreement with GDOT for Horizon South. On December 20th, the board approved the construction contract with the Arsenale for the Horizon South Parkway widening project. The amount exceeded the budget. Staff worked closely with the TIA office. We let you know then in December that the TIA office had committed to covering the overage. This supplemental agreement will increase the construction budget from $21,885,395 to $25,805,150. Um, this supplemental agreement, uh, will increase the construction budget from twenty-one, uh, million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars to twenty-five million, eight hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. But this is basically just formalizing that agreement, uh, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
I move. Item?
This next item is supplemental agreement number two with GDOT for the PFA or Project Framework Agreement on Herford Farm Road Widening. Uh, this is to authorize the chairman to execute supplemental agreement number two for this project. In early twenty twenty-two, the MPO authorized an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand for this project, which was approved by the board on March fifteenth of last year. However, GDOT recently realized that this agreement was never executed. Um, so we're already working under this agreement, we just have to formalize the agreement. Staff recommends approval.
Second. So I move.
This next item is resolution twenty-three dash, uh, one-two, and it's the project delivery agreement with GDOT for the next groupings of resurfacings for, uh, TIA two. Uh, for CDP Industrial Boulevard, Oakley Purple Road, Old Wheeler Road, Park West Drive, South Old Bel Air Road, and Wright's Borough Road. Uh, this is, uh, we're requesting, uh, the board adopt the resolution and approve the PDA. Uh, this is the formality in order for the county to deliver these projects.
Second. I move.
The last two items, um, I'll kind of present them together, then we'll go through each item. But, uh, currently, uh, we work with, um, infrastructure consulting engineers, or ICE. Um, ICE is under contract currently with the county to provide, uh, inspection services on one contract for Furious Ferry Road, one contract for Lewiston Road, in which they provided one full-time inspector and additional supplemental inspectors who are testing as needed. Um, staff has realized that it can be difficult, because while one project will ramp up and the other one's slow, we can't, uh, pull that inspector off that job to help us with this other TIA project. So what we would like to do is, uh, terminate that exist, those existing agreements, and then, uh, approve a, a, a universal TIA agreement with ICE to where their inspectors can move from job to job. That said, additionally, first contracts were executed about eighteen months ago, nineteen months ago. There's a clause in the contracts that allow them to renegotiate their rates after eighteen months. Um, they've asked to do that. Um, of all their rates, they have six or seven different rates. They're only asking to increase two of those rates. Uh, their inspector one rate from seventy-three dollars per hour to seventy-nine dollars per hour, and their senior inspector rate from eighty-five dollars an hour to eighty-nine dollars per hour. All their other rates are holding, and all their testing materials, uh, testing rates, uh, scheduled rates are holding as well. Um, so the first item before you is to terminate the existing two agreements.
In that effect, dollar-wise.
I'm sorry?
What is it going to cost us to increase the rates?
I'd have to pull the spreadsheet, Mr. Eubank, do you have that?
Keep in mind, this is all paid back by TIA, and we actually get a three percent bump on top of us, the more we spend, the more we make.
Right. Kind of like my wife.
The way it works.
That is not working, no. Blew that up.
Our agreement with GDOT is if we manage their project, we get a three percent fee for managing their project for them. They cover all costs. We spend a thousand dollars on an inspector, we get a thousand and three dollars back.
But it doesn't come out of any bucket that we were already allocated dollars?
TIA bucket, if we don't spend the TIA dollars, it goes back into the pot and gets distributed amongst thirteen counties.
But based on all these bids, I see it's going to get spent.
Yeah, it will.
We have a baseline spreadsheet we can, we can update, I, I didn't bring it with me, but I can get it.
I understand your principle, yeah, I'd just like to know what, how much more we gain.
It's, well, Mr. Eubank had mentioned, it's, it's, we guarantee forty hours a week, uh, per, for one inspector for each job. Um, so it'll, it'll be nominal, but I can get you updated numbers and.
Thank you. So this doesn't increase any inspectors who have multiple projects going at one time, does it?
It allows us the opportunity to, if we need it.
Call in another guy.
Correct, but again, we don't have to go out and hire a new Columbia County Inspector. We have that ability, and to Mr. Slatter's point, um, it's funded through TIA and we get a three percent admin on top of it.
That it would make things more efficient, too, if you, big guy, or, or you can move on and off of projects.
That's exactly right, we're able to, we're able to staff up as needed or, or move and reallocate, whereas right now, we can't. If, if Lewiston Road ramps up, then we actually have to call in another inspector. Whereas with this agreement, we will be able to, hey, Furious Ferry's relatively slow this week, let's put both inspectors on Lewiston Road.
Alright, so the first item is terminating the existing contract.
Contracts.
Contracts, and then the second is.
One new contract.
I move to consent.
Second. So move. Second is contract.
Move to consent.
Second. So move. The reason I ask is, how often do you, are you able to just raise your rates? Private sectors? New contract, I'm sure in eighteen months, they will have the same clause in there.
This is a new contract for two years.
Two years.
And for the record, um, staff, these were not their original, uh, requested rates, staff negotiated heavily with them to get them down to these current rates. And, uh, going back eighteen months, these would still be the second lowest of the four requested rates months ago. So they're still really competitive rates.
Good work. Staff report, Gordon?
Yes, sir, I've included the year-to-date budget report and the water and sewer construction, uh, project reports for your review. Ready to answer any questions you may have.
Crack, and we go.
According to their schedule, it is, but they're, they're scheduled to finish right in the middle of our busy season. So some startup may be a little problematic, we may have to push that back to the fall. But, um, but it looks like they're going to finish up sometime this summer.
On the, the master plan?
Yes, sir, we've reviewed the, um, preliminary master plan and sent it back for comments. I've asked for, uh, for them to provide their final changes for our comments by the second Friday in April.
Further questions? Missioners, public comment? Couple of session items, what you. Motion to move him to the full board.
Second.
We are adjourned at nine thirteen.